Seven o'clock, we call meeting order. Roll call, Chisman.
Present.
Binge.
Present.
Smith.
Present.
Van Dorn.
Present.
Coop.
Present.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent, approve the agenda. Make a motion to approve the agenda. Motion by Chisman?
Second.
Seconded by Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. And also accept a motion to approve the consent agenda. Make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion by Binge?
I'll second.
Seconded by Coop. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. All right, Mayor's Notes for July 9th. Citywide cleanup day on June 15th and 16th. We're a great success as we filled three dumpsters and people were able to declutter some of their properties in the city. We as mayor and council are extremely pleased to bring this back to the community after a brief hiatus. June 18th, we reached out to Ryan Gloucester for a street repair on the corner of Main and South Street. The project was completed on July 3rd, people were driving on it on July 4th. Looks good as new. We're a little behind on our proposed road work, patching streets. The patch has been ordered and our volunteer team will be looking to tackle and fill in potholes as soon as, soon as it gets here, so. Some work was done at the sewage union, a new battery was put into the flow meter that charts the sewage that comes through there. We were having some issues with that, but everything's running well now. Some cattle panels were purchased and will be installed in the next couple of days for some, repair some holes in the fence we had down there. Our water, which has been kind of one of those struggles. We had the chart there a while back that was showing how much we're using and it's kind of progressively gone up. Last month, we used 546,000 gallons, which is the lowest, I want to believe, I want to say since February of 2016. So finding some of the leaks and getting them repaired and patched is starting to pay off. So it's really, really good news. The 2018 fiscal year concluded on June 30th and for the first time in quite some time, the city took in more money than it spent. We ended the year with cash holdings of $44,848.13. We started out here with roughly $39,000. We're still not on great footing financially, but we are making strides in the, in the right direction. So I want you guys to know that we're doing the best we can financially. Blakesburg summer ball parents concluded their ball season. The Monroe County All-Star softball team, the 10-year-olds and the 12-year-old teams with six Blakesburg girls on them. Both qualified for the state tournament and boom, they're playing, going on right now, so some good news. The ABF girls at the high school are in the regional final with Blakesburg girl Randy Richmond pitching for them. So we got a lot of, a lot of good kids coming out of Blakesburg and playing some ball right now, so good deals there. Lastly, I'm just, you know, you hear the, all the talk that's going around town. Lastly, I just would, would like to make a note that we as mayor and council take every decision made here very seriously and more importantly, with the entire city of Blakesburg's well-being in mind. Some very difficult decisions affecting people's lives are made up here every month. Whether it be raising rates on utilities or ordinance pertaining to living conditions, they aren't just acted upon on a whim. Everything is thought of from multiple angles at length before anything is put on the agenda to be decided upon. Our main goal is to provide the citizens with the best quality of life we can. No decision up here should ever be taken personally because the well-being of the whole city is what has to come first. That's all I've got for the mayor's notes. Do we have any public comment?
How much did the garbage cost?
For the monthly now?
No, no. For the cleanup day?
Oh, I have not received the bill yet.
Oh, okay, I'm serious.
Those are a lot of stuff though, we got a lot of stuff cleaned up. They were full, full on Friday, there wasn't a whole lot of room left on Saturday.
I guess around 3,000 bucks or something.
Yeah.
Well, we're hoping for no more.
Yeah. Okay, if there's no more communication from the public, we will move on to old business. Something that we've discussed in the past, I know Bob was, uh, proposing to getting rid of some ash trees. We talked to the clerk and then a lot of discussion amongst the community about the ash trees in the park. We would like to, what we'd like to do is take bids on either a, let me see, I'll read the resolution here as it's prepared. This would be Resolution 18 dot 7 dot 9 dot 1, be resolved by the Blakesburg, the city council of the city of Blakesburg. Whereas the Blakesburg city council approves posting requests for proposals to cut down dead ash trees in the city park. City maintenance and volunteers will dispose of the trees after they're cut. Bids should be submitted by, and that's where we're going to have to pick a date. I believe August 1st, I think that gives everybody about three weeks to get bids in. And when they provide their bids, rates may be stated as per tree or per day with an estimate number of trees to be cut per day. And the work must be completed by and we can fill that in at some point. So I guess I'm looking for a motion to approve Resolution 18 dot 7 dot 9 dot 1. Has there ever been any discussion on this? I guess first I should say, Bob, yeah?
Basically what we're talking about is they're going to top them and then cut them down.
That's kind of, I guess, maybe I was going to go down a little bit.
Most of those trees can't be safely felled. I mean, they're, yeah.
Well, the way, the way the guys did it, top them, under them, fall them, like they've always done. Under, here and down, just fall the whole tree.
Should we mention numbers? Because I don't want everybody in town to believe that we're going to nail every ash tree in town right now. It's probably going to be, what, two or three?
That's, that's.
Well, that, somebody had to go look and decide what's the.
I know there's like two really, really bad ones kind of right in the middle of the park and that's what I think we would go for the worst ones.
One hanging over the street there and then that other one that don't have a leaf on it.
Right.
Probably should come down up by the van stand. But, uh.
There's one tree in the back, I don't think some ash is, but also, you know, that one should come down.
We're probably looking at two or three. We got about a thousand dollars, I think roughly, we can spend on it as well.
That's what we're kind of hoping for, that the bids come in under.
And I know different people, when they bid these, bid taking the whole tree out and the stump. But we're just, our plan is just to leave the stump for now. We just want as many trees as they can get down, down. A stump isn't going to kill somebody. But we should, after that tree fell down in Illinois or something, we probably should be making a tent. I mean, that was maple tree, I think, anyway, but, but make a small tent and, and put a little money towards it. For right now is the best we can do.
Is there any plan to replace these trees as we go through?
Not really, right at this point.
There's probably get some grant money for that. There's, I've been doing a little reading, there's generally grant money out there for replacement trees.
That's, that's what I was thinking, I mean, I, I would doubt that it should cost the city any money to replace them, but I think we should be trying to replace them as we're taking them out.
I'll dig into that a little more in the next couple of days. I've, I've read some stuff, there's generally grants available, I think, I think I might even put some grants out, I'm not sure.
But we'll kind of have to watch there too, because like the, you're not going to be able to plant them too close to the
Yeah.
stumps that are there, there's going to be an awful lot of tree roots around there, so kind of after. I know we have that one tree that's coming up that has been dedicated to what?
I was saying, a garden club's going to put one in.
Yeah. Yeah. Uh, Mackinac, Mrs. Mackinac.
Yeah. So they've got one already dedicated to come in, probably would just like the gardening club. They kind of usually take care of that whole thing, that'd probably be the, you know, they'll know what.
I'm just thinking, there's an awful lot of shade up there.
Yeah.
If we go take it, we end up having to take them all down.
Yeah, but.
Can't replace that shade very quick.
You're not going to be, you're not going to replace it very fast.
Yeah.
You know, which is, oh, okay.
That's what I think that we've got a little extra money, there's been a lot more talk about it and we're trying to.
The best we'll do is take them bids and see, see where.
Go and see where we are.
We really can't, I've had people even ask about knocking them down and trying to let people get firewood out of them, but as far as a safety deal, we can't do that because if something gets hurt or you have that tree lean there, half of a tree lean there. Kids can get hurt climbing around on it. So basically they have to saw down what they can get down and we found a place out of town they can haul it to. Basically our bid was going to have them not us hauling it out because we don't have the equipment to do it or the trailer. They would haul it.
And that has been.
They would saw it and haul it off the property.
Kevin did contact the DNR and said that this, that the plan for removal was fine, that they were good with it. They just got a place to haul it, haul them and get them out of town, so.
Okay, well, this resolution, we have to put a date?
We have to put a date in for the dates to be, the bids to be submitted by. And that's where I was hoping, August 1st. Would that be, that gives everybody three weeks to get the word out.
And then it gives two weeks. And then the second week would be the ordering of bids for.
Yeah.
They are.
Are they advertising like in the paper or just word of mouth?
Yeah, because advertising, it'll be published in the paper. Our meeting will be August 13th. The corn carnival, I believe, is the 22nd, 23rd, or 21st, 22nd, 23rd. So.
It's up September.
Of September, yeah, so I'm thinking we're completed by September 16th, would be a Sunday.
How about the 1st?
So you want to give them, I mean, we won't decide on it until the 13th. We won't open the bids until the 13th.
Give them till the, give them a.
A month?
A month, 13.
Basically, we do the 13th to the 13th. So bids must be submitted by August 1st, 2018, work must be completed, completed by September 13th. I did say 2018, yes, 9-13.
If it, if it comes down to it and we've got, if you can get more done, I don't know if we, if we have bids that are less money, but they can't get there before September 13th, we'll have to also try and figure that out. I mean, not a whole lot of window room here in trying to get somebody to bid something and get it out, but. But we'll just over, just oversee that after they send the bids in and.
If they ask for more time, I think we can cooperate, I don't, I mean. I'd like to have them down by the apartment, but if not, then so be it.
Well, we got another, we got an extra week right there to play with.
Right, yeah, because we can give them another week, because yeah, that does leave us open for.
So it's, the bids by the 1st.
Were completed by September 13th.
Do you need to stipulate, maybe that's insurance bonding?
Yeah, that's, yeah, they'll have to be, yeah.
The fact that that is included in our ordinance, we believe that they have to be before we can approve them.
Yeah, so mainly that, just as long as we all know that we're trying to get as many down and the stump should stay for now. And we basically got a farmer to let us take them to his place and dump them. I mean, they're just going to be dumped in piles, I don't know how it's going to work, so.
I'll talk to Chris and see if I can't, well, grinder sometime to, they got those great big ones.
Well, it shouldn't happen, grind anything, because that's just.
No, it was stump.
Oh, stump grinder, yeah, we can, but that's way, yeah. Because if we get more money after this, we probably better keep knocking trees down before we take down these stumps.
I do believe the best way about doing this would be accepting bids through mail and we're in the drop box instead of. I mean, that way it's on paper and in print.
Yeah.
So if we can include that in our motion to approve this resolution. I guess I'd look for someone to make a motion to approve, accept the bids for ash trees.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 18 dot 7 dot 9 dot 1, removal of dead ash trees in the city park.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Chisman, seconded by Coop. This will be a roll call. Vote. Chisman?
Aye.
Binge?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Van Dorn?
Aye.
Coop?
Aye.
All right, perfect. Okay, next up. So maybe got the cart in front of the horse just a little bit last month with the, as it pertained to living in a recreational vehicle for more than 30 days. Ended the day after the meeting and talked to the county sheriff and asked him about how to enforce this thing and he goes, "What's your penalty?" That's a very good question, if you don't have a penalty, who's going to, and then those other questions about that. I give them sort of papers and what have you. But the main thing was, we have to put a penalty or fine some sort on the books or it makes no difference what we have to have. So I left that blank so we can discuss what we think a fair penalty is for living in a recreational vehicle for more than 30 days. We'd like it to be firm, but yet not, I mean, if we have to find somebody, we shouldn't make it. Find at a point that it will never get paid and we'll never see that. So hopefully everybody will cooperate and we won't have to worry about it, that's what it boils down to. $50 would be $1,500 a month, $100 would be $3,000 a month if they're in there. And this is a per day fine, so if you're in there per day.
What's it, what's it cost to put one in a, haul to park?
$30 a day.
Down in the tunnel?
I think it's $30 a day.
So if we're asking for.
Seventeen.
Is it seventeen? Seventeen a day? So, I mean, we want to, I, I mean, this is an issue, it is a problem.
I think we want to make it, confirm it after they don't want to do it.
Right, and that's what I'm getting at is.
$20 a day.
I hear. $20 a day would be, that would only be $600 a month, I mean, that's a.
That's pretty desperate.
That's pretty cheap rent. So that's what I'm thinking, we go, I mean, it needs to be a penalty.
It's even, it's steep and it's, no one's going to want to pay it. We don't want them paying it, we want them to.
We want them to quit.
Yeah, you can't let them want to.
They like $50 a day.
You don't want to end up on the property, do you? Will?
Not necessarily, not for sure. I just, I mean, there's so, again, that's something that we discussed when I discussed in my notes, I mean, this is something that the, I mean, something that we think about really serious, but it's also, I mean, a quality of life issue for neighbors. It's, it's just the practice that's gone on for far too long and.
It's not legal in most towns.
Most cities.
I don't know statewide.
They make you live in an RV park or.
Anybody know what surrounding cities, what they have on there?
A lot of states that you can't live in, you have all, period, unless they have an RV park. And I know Unionville flirted with putting in an RV park and that brought in a bad element into the city that they ended up, I think, doing away with their ordinance as well.
I almost went to Nidalee, did I get no idea what the church ran?
Like, sweet, easty. So I have $100, is there anybody else who feels that's too high?
Well, if we do $100, what happens if they don't pay?
Okay, and that's, that's where.
We hook up to the camper and boil that water.
That's where we lean, put a lean on the property like we would, like we'd have to do on other properties where we haven't received more payments or people have left and just ditched with no. We're also going to go discuss this a little bit, a meeting, we've got a meeting scheduled with the city attorney tomorrow to go kind of discuss some, some issues and stuff that's going on moving forward with, with nuisance abatement and other things that's going to happen. So, I mean, I'll know more tomorrow as far as enforcement goes. I do feel that, that it needs to be firmly.
I don't have a problem with $100 a day, I don't think you'll ever see any money from it, so.
But that would also be, I mean, show that we're very serious, that this issue is something we take serious and we don't want this practice continuing in town, so hopefully they'll be out before the 30 days.
Can we take a vote on that $100 figure?
I'm okay with it, if you guys are, if anybody, I guess we'll take, well, shake a boot on that and then pass the resolution after that. All right, well, we'll just, we'll include that right in the resolution. Resolution 18 dot 7 dot 9 dot 2 reads, approving the fine for living in a recreational vehicle for more than 30 days. Addendum to ordinance 18 dot 6 dot 11 dot 1 to have the following fine. Recreation, recreational vehicle violation per day, $100.
Yeah, because I, I don't think I'm trying to make people to be able to live with this. I could put a thousand on that and be happy, it's a, I'm not going to allow it, you know? We got little kids living in totally, totally dangerous situations that, yeah, I guess, would I say we go this hundred?
If everybody's in agreement at $100, I would accept a motion to approve Resolution 18 dot 7 dot 9 dot 2 with the, the fine being $100 per day.
I'll make a motion to accept the resolution with $100 a day figures of fine for Resolution 9 dot 2.
I'll second. Motion by Van Dorn, seconded by Smith. Roll call, Chisman?
Aye.
Binge?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Van Dorn?
Aye.
Coop?
Aye.
We can amend it, I think, if that's all right with the people making the motion, just to say we're trying to waive the second and third reading. Since it's part of the ordinance.
You want to redo that again?
Yeah, just waive those second and third reading?
Yes.
Okay, there's an amendment to, amendment to the motion where we will include that we will be waiving the second and third reading ordinance in the addendum. I do believe that it was motion by Van Dorn. Again, Jerry?
Yeah, I make a motion, we passed Resolution 18 dot 7 dot 9 dot 2 with waiving, also waiving the second and third.
Reading ordinance addendum. Okay, motion by Van Dorn?
Seconded.
Smith seconds again. If I'll do this again, all in favor, Chisman?
Aye.
Roll call, Chisman? Aye. Binge?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Van Dorn?
Aye.
Coop?
Aye.
Okay, new business. We have been, a lot of, there's been a lot of discussion about repro, approving, putting the local option sales tax on the November ballot. Gone back and forth about how this process needed to happen. We feel that we're pretty comfortable with what our city attorney has prepared for us. I'll read that for everybody. Motion to request the Wapahoe County Commissioner of Elections to hold an election in the Incorporated City of Blakesburg, Iowa on the question of proposed change in the use of local option sales tax revenue. Comes now, the city council of the city of Blakesburg, Iowa does hereby, upon its own motion, request the Wapahoe County Commissioner of Elections to hold an election in the Incorporated City of Blakesburg on the question of a proposed change in the use of local option sales tax revenue. Specifically, the city council of the city of Blakesburg, Iowa requests the following question to be, to, by post to voters of the Incorporated City of Blakesburg. Shall the following public measure be adopted? Summary, to authorize a change in the use of local option sales tax revenue in the Incorporated City of Blakesburg. The use of 1% local sales and services tax shall be charged in the following areas affected 90 days following the election. Proposed uses of the tax. If the change is approved, revenues from sales and services tax shall be allocated as follows. 0% for property tax relief. The specific purpose for which the revenue shall otherwise be expended is 100% to be used in the city of Blakesburg's general budget for several corporate purposes. 100% of the fund balance in local option sales tax fund shall be transferred to the general budget for several corporate purposes or any lawful purpose. Current uses of the tax. Revenues from the sales and services tax are currently allocated as follows. 0% for property tax relief. The specific purpose for which the revenues are otherwise expanded is to be used for capital improvements. So what happened in 2014, I believe it was 2014, local option sales tax was voted to be used for capital improvements and that severely limits what we can use it on. We are in the general fund, we've been deficit spending since 2013?
Probably right around it.
Right around 2013. What this does and what we're proposing is to move what we have in local option money, which I believe was 60, $67,000, to transfer it over to the general fund and all local option sales money going forward be put in the general fund to get us out of the general fund deficit and get us operating the way we probably should be operating, should have been operating all along. This is what we worked real hard on, you know, between thinking we were going to have to go get 800 signatures to be, and then hearing from the county auditor that, that we didn't have to do this and this is all we have to do. This is our, our hell menu, this is what we really need, I can't stress it enough. So I guess what I'm doing, what I'm asking for now is us to approve Resolution 18 dot 7 dot 9 dot 3, being resolved by the city council of the city of Blakesburg, Iowa. Whereas the Blakesburg city council approved placing changes to the use of local option sales tax on the November ballot, changing the use to the general budget for several corporate purposes or any lawful purpose. That's what we're looking for. And this is, we've had Ted Nelson at the state looking us over, he had a couple of questions. But I think we've kind of resolved them, our attorney's looked at it, she's filled it out three different times. I think this is what we are comfortable with right now, so.
Can I say that we will not waste this money?
I mean. Well, it has to pass through the election first.
Yeah, but if, if it's passed, I'll, I'll give my word, this money will not be wasted.
There, okay, what you're about to do, I don't dispute anything, I agree totally with what you're, where you're going with it. But you have to, this is a proposed amendment to the taxpayers, so you have to have a budgeted public hearing to hear the public's concerns on the wording of what you're proposing. So I just want you to know, the public has a, has to have a right to speak about the wording on that. So you're going to have to check for a public hearing on this, you can't just.
Can we shoot one in next month or do we need to do it before?
Well.
They have to have the wording, the.
In other words, the public hasn't had a chance to stand up with those wording and be a dispute or not. You can propose that to the public, but I think you have to have a public hearing to let the public hear your wording.
And then you've got to have it back in the courthouse in high court to be.
Yeah.
29th August.
The 29th of August is the bottom line, they would like to have it published before that, so.
Yes.
Is there any chance we could organize a special meeting for some time?
No problem, we.
Yeah, I think you have to, I'm just trying to say, I think you have to have a public hearing on that.
No, that's, we want to do this with Maron.
I totally agree with what you're doing, the money, Jay, absolutely agree with it. The caution I would give you is elected officials come and go, so you're giving a blank check for a general fund? So if you're voted out in the next two, for however long it's local state, but the next.
There is a subset date on the local option sales tax and I, I just, I mean, I can do some more research, I'll make a phone call to Maron and find out when that is, so when we have our special meeting, when we happen to put it public.
You know, and somebody else coming in after you guys that's reckless, again, has a bigger swing if they could spend it for. I mean, charge ahead, I agree with where you're going and what you're using the money for, I'm 100% in agreement, but.
Maybe a little special.
We have to get it on the ballot and that's what we have to do.
Well, I think too, the public hearing's a good idea because it gives everybody an opportunity.
Well, I think too, the public hearing's a good idea because it gives everybody an opportunity to ask questions on what your plans are and to understand it better versus just reading it on a ballot when they show up to the.
Well, you might consider a use that, for the use that you've stated, for the general fund debt relief, for a four or five year term and then the balance after that to be re-reviewed. It don't lock yourself in.
I don't know if we'd have to have a special meeting. I think if we just put this on the agenda again for the August meeting. And have a public hearing. Start the meeting, we'll just do it. Shoot it. So I guess.
I mean, it's a referendum that's coming on an election, so it has to have a public hearing, that much I know.
Thank you. Save the best money.
Somebody call you on that.
Yeah, I'm sure. I appreciate that.
Better nail it a month or two.
Yeah, alright. So I guess what I'm, now what we're looking for, uh.
I'm gonna push the table, that's cool.
That's my, yep, that's exactly what I was saying.
Just propose that you're gonna make, pass resolution, you're gonna propose what you proposed to the public and set your public hearing date. You know, have a, I know you're gonna week or two.
Proceeding the next month.
Okay.
We have a meeting.
We have a motion to propose a public hearing for what we just proposed, for the August thirteenth meeting.
Yes.
Second.
Motion by Binge, seconded by Smith. All in favor?
Uh, opposed.
Thank you, 'cause you're dealing with some beginners up here. That's what we got, same with me. That probably saved us a lot of headaches, so, yeah. Okay, um. Okay, uh, moving forward, this one's, uh, I need a motion to purchase many blinds for the council room in the city clerk office. Let me see, lights just shining through. We'd like to have some blinds for when it gets real bright and everything. This might be the easiest thing we've had to pass since January, so if anybody, I take a motion to approve.
I make a motion to buy some many blinds.
Motion by Coop. Seconded by Ben, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
I'm still thinking about the quarter inch steel.
Okay, now, next on the, next on the list, uh, the shrubs on the east side of the park. We've talked to the garden club and they were actually interested also in having those removed. We could do that. I think the city may do it. Full poison ivy, uh, former city man used to try to tear it or he got poison ivy real bad a couple of times, I believe, um.
Trey told him what it was called.
You see, I got him working it.
Stay out of the bushes, Kevin.
But there, and there is a plan. I do believe the garden club would like to replace them with, Jenny, help me.
They were miniature, I don't know, bushes or something, something. I told him to keep something small.
But there is a plan in place to replace them, so I guess if, uh, I'm looking for a motion to approve removal of the shrubs on the east side of the park.
Y'all make a motion that we go ahead with the removal of the shrubs on the east side of the park. Basically, probably, let's see if we can't get somebody with a big tiller to till it up so they can commence and plant what they want.
Alright, motion by Van Dorn?
We'll do all this before the carnival.
That started, oh.
I'd like them gone this week.
Yeah.
Get rid of them anyway. I don't know if they're gonna get them planted or not.
No, no.
And I, I had one concern on that whole thing was I'd like to see him keep something fairly small so when kids run across an alley. Or keep them trimmed low so when kids run across that alley like during especially corn carnival. There's a lot of people driving back there, let people off and, and kids are running back and forth through them shrubs that's there now. I'd like to see him not have stuff up over four feet or so.
Shut that alley down during.
That's a strike.
And, and there's, and there's, uh, the bar, uh, I mean, that's not the last access they have.
You're not gonna get out during.
I do. I usually end up at the ball fountain and run the.
A lot of people drop the ball.
They come into the park.
Up at the park from.
And that's where the vans usually come to park right there along that side.
Really?
Set up on stage and.
The alley has to be left open for.
With any of that, you know, they can, I think, like, you know, they have to, to keep stuff down to a shrub size or something. But basically, we, we all to tear it down and we'll get that done before the, you know, how fast it gets planted back.
I do have a motion on the table by Van Dorn to remove the shrubs on the south side of the park. No, seconded, seconded by Chisman. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next on the list is increasing the petty cash from fifty to a hundred dollars, uh, cash to make change for utility bills. Sometimes.
You skipped one, didn't you?
Oh, yep, I, I did. Okay.
We're trying to get down here to the.
I'm trying to get the jury. Approve, uh, city council adding street signage as needed. There are some places around town that have kinda, there's blind spots. We would just like the ability to, you know, no parking from here to corner on a couple of different places. Just a lot of street maintenance and things that I think would help us out as public safety issues. I know if you come out here on the corner, uh, all those cars lined up and, I mean, you gotta be pretty much on the intersection before you, before you turn. Just a lot of different, lots of places. We'd just like to, uh, and I guess I would like to have the ability that if there's, there's issues, that we could put signs up. So I guess I'm asking for permission. For the council?
Right now, it's kinda done by, from what I gathered, the law enforcement, is that?
Law enforcement told us we can put signs wherever we want, so this is kinda just you guys granting us authorization, granting me authorization that we can put them up as we deem necessary and where we deem necessary. Law enforcement county, uh, I think Kevin contacted the county one day and they said, I don't care where you put signs.
Well, we used to have signs too with tonnage limits.
Yep, and that was when we were doing the double seal code on the streets.
Trying to protect, trying to protect the streets. And those are gone, so now we see what's happening.
Yep.
Which mainly we could get someone and put back on some.
What he told me was, I think it was twenty-two feet. He said all he cared about was twenty-two feet. You know, the road width. There's probably, there's a regulation for everything. There's probably be a certain distance from the curb that you have to set, but that's, that's easy to find out.
And certainly there's some street signs gone too.
And that's what, we would, instead of having to get a motion to approve every different street sign, this would take care of that, that I could, we'd go down and find street with street signs missing and, and we could get street signs posted and get everything put back up, so. Guess I'm asking for.
I make a motion to approve the council adding street signals as needed.
Motion by Ben.
Second.
Seconded by Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed.
And make sure some of the signs that are there, that brush gets trimmed back so you can actually see the sign.
Alright, now, uh, I'd like to increase petty cash from fifty to a hundred dollars to make change for cash utility payments. You get fifteen or twenty people coming in and paying cash on a utility day and then I'd end up with a bunch of big bills and she has no money to make change. So that is the only reason why this is on hand, so she can make, make change for utility payments. So I look for a motion from somebody to increase petty cash from fifty to a hundred dollars.
I'd like a motion to increase petty cash from fifty to a hundred dollars.
Motion by Chisman?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Coop. All in favor?
Aye.
As I was having, street closing for the carnival. Jay, are you on here on behalf of the corn carnival tonight or is that?
Well, apparently Tracy didn't show up, but yes, same as normal, same as always.
And we have the map.
You've got the map.
Yeah, so.
So when are they gonna sit up at the carnival?
Probably about the twenty-seventh or eighth of September.
I think what is what.
Just the way they all.
Is it, is it, okay.
Something like.
The Friday, Saturday, Sunday?
He'll, yeah.
So why should we close them on Wednesday?
I think they, they.
I think, I think they closed them on Thursday.
On Thursday?
Well, they did it Wednesday last year.
'Cause I thought they did do it a day early there, last year, the year before.
They had to set up a goal.
Right.
Well, Thursday afternoon. Don't we have trees getting cut down?
We have trees getting cut down, but the carnival isn't until the twenty-second, twenty-third, so, I mean.
And I don't know for sure what day Tim plans to bring the.
Bring the rides?
Yeah, 'cause they close on a Wednesday. Dave says, why close on a Wednesday? It's not gonna set up for Thursday night.
Yeah, so let's, uh, I guess in this motion, would you guys be okay with closing the streets at noon on Thursday?
As far as I know, that would be great, huh?
That way we can get the, the school buses can get through, taking kids to school that day and we just close it.
I'd say they wouldn't have to close them until Thursday evening or something.
Well, whenever they start.
Whenever it brings that stuff in.
If they're done Thursday and if it's, it's closed by Thursday noon, uh, will you guys be contacting the fire department, block, cleaning the streets? I know they just always come up and close the streets or did.
Probably.
Okay, alright.
So last year, I went to a ball cap and pushed all the dirt.
Yes, you did.
But then Chuck wasn't very happy that I used the whole, all that day. He thought I was gonna go in front of my house, so I got lost. Well, that's when Mitchell was gonna come with his little tractor. He was there ten minutes and said, watch him up, I'm gonna go home.
That'd be, that'd be a great thing for the fire department to do.
Okay, they just always do it from the fire department, just always come up, clean the streets for the carnival, that's. Uh, we'll contact, either you guys contact them or, uh, contact, just let me know and we'll figure out where we're going. So I would entertain a motion to propose closing the streets on Thursday, September twentieth at noon for the corn carnival, for the, the setup of the rides and the, everything for the corn carnival.
Are we gonna have to get the closed signs or is the carnival people gonna get the closed signs?
The county bring it up last year.
I think the county bring it up, but we just have to notify.
Yeah.
You all done last year? We went down in front of the county?
City went down some and then, somebody else went down some.
We took, uh, Mill Mitchell's dump trailer, worked pretty good.
Okay.
Didn't have to lift them up, back opened up, unload them. I think, I think I took a lot of them back, but we brought them out in a trailer.
Alright, well, that sounds, sounds good to me. Uh, anybody's gotta, if we could get a motion to approve closing the streets at noon on September twentieth?
Oh, make a motion.
Motion by Coop?
Nobody's.
Seconded by.
If we totally knock out the thing and if they don't meet them till Thursday night, is that better for school and stuff or?
Yes.
So then, Jay, do you think we should wait till, uh, four o'clock?
Yeah, that's what I would do.
I would say try to make a call after, you know.
Let those school buses get through. Of course, we'll close that street anyway.
Right, well, yeah, they go by down there.
Yes.
Have you?
Well, listen up, let it go down.
We have the August meeting and if we need to amend it, we can come up and do it then, so. Let's do, let's amend that motion. I'd like a motion to, that we'll close the streets for the corn carnival on September twentieth at four o'clock. Mason, you still making that motion?
Sure you don't wanna do five?
That's before, I would do it before, I think.
It's after hour.
Okay, I will make a motion to close the streets for corn carnival Thursday, September twentieth at four P M.
Four P M. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Chisman. Thank you, seat the buzzer. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nobody. I would take a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Who's making?
I'll make the motion, I guess.
Jerry, motion by Jay Van Dorn, seconded by Coop.